Invited guests, friends and neighbors. In addition, I want to recognize my council colleagues on the dais. Want to recognize our city manager, Mr. Carter, city attorney, Lavonda Graham-Williams, and our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Also want to recognize our city staff and all those in attendance tonight. Thank you all for being here. We will now stand for a moment of silence and afterwards, we will have the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will ask all of my colleagues of council to please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of city council are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we do have the minutes of a call meeting for November 12th, 2024, and a regular meeting for November 12th, 2024. Do we have a motion and a second to approve the meeting?
A good option.
Second.
Please vote electronically. Sir? Oh.
The minutes are adopted, six zero.
Thank you, sir. We do have a presentation as the next item on agenda, so I would ask our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Brian Donahue, and also our Chair of the Economic Development Authority, Mr. Malcolm Mitchell, to please come forward, sirs. Good evening, gentlemen. If you could stand and face the audience, please. The following proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the government of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community; and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 33.3 million small businesses in the United States, which account for 99.9 percent of all firms with paid employees in the United States, and all accredited for 63 percent of the new jobs created from 1995 to 2021. Small businesses employ 46,000, forty, excuse me, 46 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States and represent 43.5 of gross domestic product. And whereas, by almost any measure, small businesses are a vital part of the American economy and workforce; and whereas, based on research released last year, the reported projected spending in the United States from those who shop at small businesses or Small Business Saturday in 2023 was around $17 billion. Since its launch in 2010, the total reported U.S. spending at small businesses during the annual Small Business Saturday is an estimated $201 billion. And whereas, Portsmouth, Virginia supports our local businesses that creates jobs, boosts our local economy, and preserves our community; and whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the county, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Shannon E. Glover, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in Portsmouth, and I urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof and on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia, to be affixed this 26th day of November, 2024. Congratulations, gentlemen. Gentlemen, is there anything that you wanted to say in recognition of Small Business Saturday?
Yes. Just a couple of comments. I just would like to let everyone know that we spent $362,000 in supporting small businesses this year. In addition to that, we had a Shop the Block activity on High Street, which was another opportunity for our small businesses to show their wares and services. It was well received. We had activities for children, activities for adults. We had a Shark Tank event that occurred, and I must tell you, as walking around, a lot of people said, coming from Norfolk, for example, this is the first time I've been in Portsmouth for a while, and I am surprised and excited, and we will in fact be back. So that was good news to hear. And the last two things is that we have had a pop-up with Bloom Co-Working, which has provided an opportunity for small businesses to launch in a controlled environment, with the hope that they will see enough sales to open up their own standalone store. I can tell you at least two of those vendors will be moving to their own standalone store, and they also receive some national advertising from a national magazine as well. And finally, throughout the year, we offer a multitude of services to small businesses around accounting, marketing, management principles, et cetera. So Portsmouth is a great place for small businesses to grow and thrive.
Mr. Donahue, did you have any comments?
Sure. Well, thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, members of city council, for recognizing this coming Saturday, November 30th, as Small Business Saturday. We have an incredible small business community here in the city of Portsmouth. There are over 6,000 businesses in Portsmouth, and over 90 percent of those are small businesses. They're an incredibly passionate and dedicated group of individuals here on the city, doing some very amazing things. I would encourage our community to visit our retailers and restaurants this holiday season to show your support as well, and experience all the wonderful things, wonderful things they have here to offer the community. But again, Mayor, thank you for recognizing what they do.
Thanks to the both of you, and don't forget to shop on Small Business Saturday. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving right along in our agenda, we have the city manager's report, item 24-352. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting litter prevention and recycling program funds in the amount of $28,193 from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality and Appropriating said funds in the FY 2025 Grants Fund for use in connection with the Portsmouth Litter Prevention and Recycling Program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, six zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next item, item 24-353. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation the donation of a surveillance trailer by the Elizabeth River Project to the Portsmouth Police Department.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
We need your mics on, please?
We need your mics on, please. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, six zero.
Item 24-354. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance appropriating $750,000 from the fund balance of the general fund to the FY 2025 general fund budget for the purpose of offering an annual leave buyback benefit for eligible city employees.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, six zero.
The next item is item 24-355. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance accepting additional supplemental nutrition assistance program employment and training funding in the amount of $18,076 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2025 Social Services Fund Budget for eligible program uses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, six zero.
Our next item, item 24-356. This is a two-part resolution item, item A and item B. Madam Clerk, would you please read the item for this, that we're considering for this item?
Yes, sir. Resolution endorsing the city's 2025 General Assembly Legislative Package.
Thank you. And so we are considering at this time, item A or?
This is item A.
Yes. And so, council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move for adoption.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So just for clarification, the adoption of the resolution to endorse the General Assembly Legislative Package excludes the charter amendments that are going to be voted on separately. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Council members, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted, six zero. Item B is a resolution endorsing the city's 2025 federal legislative package for the 119th Congress.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronic. Councilman Hugel, sorry, sorry, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So at the work session discussion we had, not tonight, but earlier, we discussed payment in lieu of taxes, and the feedback that I got when I asked the question was that there was work to be done to develop the payment in lieu of taxes initiative to go to the federal level. I guess I would ask my colleagues to, that we ought to task the city manager to get that set in motion. We'll be headed to Washington, D.C., to the National League of Cities meeting in March. That'll be our opportunity to engage face-to-face our congressional leadership. It would be good to have something in hand when we make that visit. So if it's consensus of my colleagues, I'd like to ask the city manager to start working on that pilot, or payment of taxes initiative.
Very well, sir. We are in need, and we are in need of a consensus of council to move that request forward as requested, in order to task the city manager with bringing back that information. If you would all, if you are in favor of that, if you would all present by a show of hands that we did a consensus on the request to ask the city manager to move forward with providing an update on information regarding payment in lieu of taxes on our federal legislative agenda. And so I ask all those in favor of making sure that that gets brought back by the manager to provide a show of hands if they are in support, and I believe all of us were affirmative on that consensus.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to the vote that just happened on 256A, it does include references to the charter change that was adopted by consensus at the last council meeting, so it includes the third option. It does not include the other two that was adopted by consent subsequently. So I want to be very clear that that's in there. However, the official vote on the charter changes are included in items submitted by council, and so an adoption of the legislative packet policies does not preclude whatever vote you want on the specific charter change.
Councilman Hugel, did you want the floor, sir?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I'd ask the city attorney for some clarification. So there were four charter changes. At the last work session, we ran a consensus vote on all four. The first three were no, and the fourth was yes. So you said the third, but I think you meant the fourth? Okay, thank you.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, ma'ams. Or thank you, madams. Item, so that concludes our?
No, you have to vote, sir.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on. On the, you're right, on the adoption of the resolution for the federal legislative, we have to vote. Correct. Item B. So we have had a motion and a second. We have the discussion, so would you please note your vote electronically?
This item is adopted, six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our city manager's report. Our next item is new business, item 24-357, boards and commissions. And Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, do we have any boards of commissions to present at this time?
There are no boards and commissions to report this.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, item submitted by council, item 24-358. And Madam Clerk, item, we have four different items to consider?
Yes.
Item A would be the first resolution to consider. If you would please read the resolution for item A.
Yes, sir. A resolution requesting the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending section 3.11 regarding non-interference and appointments or removals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have, Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that this item be deferred to our second meeting in January. And in fact, in fact, the next three items, A, B, and C, all be deferred until the second meeting in January.
We have, thank you, Councilman Moody, we have a motion on the floor to defer item A, B, and C until the second meeting in January?
January 28th.
January 28th? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, please vote to defer this item?
This item is deferred by a vote of four to two.
Thank you.
These items, I'm sorry.
So once the item is deferred, speakers who have signed up for the item will not be asked to come forward?
Correct.
Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you very much. Now to item D. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the resolution that we are considering for this item?
A resolution requesting the General Assembly of Virginia to amend the Charter of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by adding new sections 13.03 and 13.04 regarding city manager action to address disparities or discrimination in the availability and utilization of minority-owned businesses or women-owned businesses.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second?
Move adoption.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted, six zero.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our items submitted by council. Are there any additional items that members of council would like to submit at this time? Well, there is one item I would like to submit. This is the most wonderful time of the year, and we were most grateful to have all the citizens come out to our annual tree lighting and festivities on last Friday. This is really a good time for us to convey, and I hope I represent all of my members on council, and they'll be able to do it in their own way. Happy Thanksgiving to each and every one of you, and I am thankful to be the leader of this city council and to work on behalf of the citizens of Portsmouth to make us the best place to live, work, play, and raise a family. Thank you. Would there be anyone else who would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing none, we will move to the next item, item 24-359. Report on pending items. Mr. Carter, sir, do you have a report on the pending items?
Yes, sir. For the first time in my tenure, I didn't actually have anything from the city council that I needed to report on, but there were several non-agenda speakers that came through. So we provided a response to some of those things that was on the non-agenda speaker's minds. So you have in front of you the, in your package, rather, the information that we provided on that. And also like to announce that the City of Portsmouth won the best illumination in the Grand Illumination Parade this year, so thank you to our Portman Recreation Department. And I too would like to take the opportunity to say thank you for all of you and all of that, all of you that have supported me being here in Portsmouth. I think we've got some pretty cool things done in my short time here. I really enjoy meeting and being a part of this community. It's a great community, and we got some really great things coming in our future. Thank you to this council for allowing me to be here, and I really appreciate all that, all of the city employees who actually make these things happen. Because, you know, you call me and you ask me for things, but at the end of the day, it's the men and women who go out and actually get the job done that matter most to this city, and I want to make sure that we thank them for who they are, what they do for this city. So thank you.
You're here. Thank you, Manager Carter. Our next item, item 24-360, non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the non-agenda speaker's statement?
City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will notice a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Alex DePaula. You will come forward and state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Alex DePaula, 900 High Street. I am founder and CEO of DePaula Growth Solutions. I provide consulting services for grassroots organizations active in gun violence prevention across Hampton Roads. I am also program director for a three-year, $2 million DOJ-funded gun violence prevention initiative called Safer Together. It's the first of its kind in the state, and I'm proud to say that this was not a result of some backroom deal. We were not written as a line item in a state budget, but rather, this was a result of a merit-based, highly competitive process, and I think this is something that every Portsmouth resident, business owner, and elected official should be really proud, that Portsmouth is leading this multi-year, multimillion-dollar effort to curb gun violence in our communities. Like so many cities throughout the county and across the Commonwealth, Portsmouth's ongoing struggle with gun violence is well documented, posing a threat to not only our public safety, but the very fabric and identity of our community. By now, we note that an effective public safety strategy requires more than a traditional law enforcement response. It calls for community-centered, multi-sector interventions that address underlying predictors of violence well ahead of a trigger ever being pulled, long before families forever altered by the loss of a loved one, and much sooner than when an entire community is left to pick up the pieces in the aftermath of a firearm-related tragedy. Last year, Virginia passed the historic Safer Communities Act, a bipartisan piece of legislation that allotted $72.5 million in investments to quote, and I quote, "support holistic, community-based strategies that address the root causes and conditions of community violence, including after-school programs and mentorship, connections to education and economic opportunities, case management for trauma-inforn mental health care, credible messengers and violence interrupters, and strategies to build trust between law enforcement agencies and community stakeholders." Of the three recipient localities designated for these funds thus far, Portsmouth is the only one, the only one, to have delivered on both the spirit and letter of this legislation. Under the Portsmouth United Initiative, spearheaded by Chief Jenkins, $1.6 million, more than half of the first cycle of Safer Communities funding, have been awarded to 22 grassroots organizations currently servicing some of Portsmouth's most vulnerable individuals at risk for gun violence. The collaborative effort exemplifies the collective impact model that is at the heart of Community Violence Intervention Framework, CVI, uniting community organizations, faith leaders, government agencies, and local businesses to tackle crime at ground zero. By leveraging evidence-based practices and fostering cross-sector partnerships such as these, Portsmouth United is laying the foundation for a safer, stronger Portsmouth. Additionally, with the hiring of Ms. Chantel Matthews as the city CVI coordinator, Portsmouth is the only recipient locality that has filled this critical role specifically spelled out in the legislation. But there's still so much more ahead. Despite being historically overlooked, underfunded, and often delegitimized, community-based programs and organizations in recent years have consistently proven to be impactful and remarkably cost-effective. Every dollar invested in prevention is a dollar that saves lives, that restores families, and that strengthens neighborhoods for years to come. In the Safer Communities Act, we have a model for bipartisan legislation that recognizes the critical role of community-based organizations in addressing the root causes of gun violence. the critical role of community-based organizations in addressing the root causes of gun violence in their respective communities. In Portsmouth United, we have an actionable blueprint that can and should be modeled across the Commonwealth if the promise of safer communities is to be fully realized. Tonight, I urge this body and its incoming members to embrace CVI as a cornerstone of the city's public safety strategy, to support Chief Jenkins and Portsmouth United Initiative, and to make the necessary investments required for this work to continue. By prioritizing this initiative without reservation, Portsmouth has a unique opportunity, this body specifically, has a unique opportunity to lead its peers in the fight against gun violence, not only the region, but across the state, to become a model city where proactive, community-driven safety and well-being are the norm and not the exception. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Hughel, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. DePaula, for coming tonight and speaking out. I don't know if you were here during the work session. Chief Jenkins presented Portsmouth United during the work session, and I shared the liaison report from Councilman Tillis and I from the Crime and Gun Violence Reduction Task Force following our inaugural meeting. I'll invite you and other neighbors who have ideas on how to address this pressing problem in Portsmouth to attend the next task force meeting, which is this coming Monday night, December the second, here on the sixth floor in the city council conference room at 6:00 PM. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Rodriguez Potts. Mr. Rodriguez Potts. Mr. Potts, are you here? Moving right along, our next speaker, Mr. Sergio Neil. Mr. Neil, if you come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm Sergio Neil. I reside at 1420 M Avenue here in the City of Portsmouth. I believe when I sent my email earlier, I asked to speak on item, what is it, two-four, two-five, six A. I know Ms. White works very hard over there, so I'm not, you know, I get it. But on that, on that issue, I would like to say this. As far as the city's state legislative package is concerned, one thing I would like to see in the future is something that the city puts together to ask the state to look at what can be done as far as parental accountability. There's a lot of things that are taking place to address youth and the issues that they bring forth and how to deal with that, but all of, none of those issues with our youth can fully be resolved unless parents are held accountable for their role and make sure our kids do what they need to do in order to grow up and become productive citizens. I am not at all against making sure that our parents know their role and they stay in their role as parents, and to make sure that, you know, there are times when we have to address the lack of parenting and means and ways that, you know, that are productive to get those parents to refocus on what is responsible, what their responsibility is. So, you know, and I know a lot of people say, you know, that that may cause some angst because, you know, people automatically think that it's a criminal element in there, or, you know, you want to put people, you know, in front of the court system all the time. So, you know, when you're talking about holding people accountable, that's not always necessarily the case. So, I'm quite sure that there is something that could be done at the state level that can help the city address this problem as well. The next thing I wanted to bring up, and it's more on a positive note, is that I was looking around, you know, the Prince Park neighborhood, and I realized, you know, as more as our population has grown, you know, more people have moved in, a lot of people, a lot of people with small children now live in that area, particularly between the area of, between Elm Avenue and Race Street and Elm Avenue and Portsmouth Boulevard, the crosswalks in our area. I would like to see them get marked so that way our children can know where to cross, to safely cross the street. We've seen oftentimes where, you know, our kids, you know, are looking for places to cross, you know, because, you know, they interact with their neighbors across the street, and we want to make sure they are crossing in a safe manner. So, that could be something that can be looked at. Also, too, the lighting along, between Elm Avenue and Race Street and Elm Avenue and Portsmouth Boulevard, the same thing. I see that the city, that there has been some work done to enhance the lighting in that area, but we would like, you know, if we could add a few more, because I've noticed, especially the end closer to Elm and Duke is a little bit darker than some other places along Elm Avenue in that area, so we would like to see that brightened. Also, too, you know, speaking of community efforts, and I would like to say this, you know, all of the community organizations that are not, you know, that unfortunately not received any funding, whatever the case might be, doing this round of the Portsmouth United, I would like to see, you know, more, if we could possibly, you know, put the, what the process is out there more, because there are a lot of community organizations that, you know, that are doing a lot of great work that could benefit from that funding, because I can tell you right now, you know, speaking of organizations, I know one in particular, you know, that is planning on taking a group of kids of 100 to 200 to Chicago to represent Portsmouth, to New York to represent Portsmouth, to Augusta, Georgia to represent Portsmouth. All of these things are planned in 2025, and I can tell you just, a 55-passenger bus one way to Chicago, well, round trip to Chicago, and it doesn't even hold all the kids, is about $9,000. So, if you take an organization that has 200 kids, that's $18,000. And, you know, when you're doing it for so long, you work with these kids for so long, you know, it adds, those costs add up, and, you know, it's hard to raise funds, you know, because everybody's not as free-giving as others, you know, and a lot of those times, you know, the community, the organizers come out of their pocket, the parents, you know, are doing a lot to come out of their pocket to make it happen, but it's always a good thing where the city can step in and make sure that those organizations, you know, get the recognition that they deserve, because I can tell you right now, that one of the organizations did a really, really good job in the Portsmouth, I'm sorry, the Norfolk Grand Illumination Parade as well. So, you know, those kids from New Generation Martian Warriors, they did a fabulous job in the parade this past Saturday. They actually performed in two sessions this past Saturday, one in Newport News at an event called Feeding Five Thousand, and then they got on the recreation buses that were so greatly, that are so greatly provided by Portsmouth Parks and Rec and made it to Norfolk and performed that night. So, I can tell you that Portsmouth has some kids that are really doing a great job, so, and whatever the city can keep doing to make sure that those organizations know that it's opportunities out there, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Justin King. Mr. King, if you're here. Justin King. Our president. Our next speaker is Dr. Bill Dotson Jr. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. William S. Dotson Jr., Bucks, 3269 Portsmouth, Virginia. Crime is the number-one issue that we need to address, but there are some simple things that we can take care of on an immediate basis that sometimes seem to just be some simple paperwork. Earlier this year, I was able to interview the employees at City Park and also make a request for the revenues that are drawn in by the boat launch fee, and the impression that I got was that the boat launch fee that we have is a detriment to our tourism, and I would ask that you consider removing that fee or asking that it be directed to a one-time annual fee. What's happening down at City Park now is that every time a boat launch has to come in from out of the city, the person is required to go over to City Park to get a permit for that day. They are not allowed to get one for each launch or for an annual pass to get them through it. That requires the drivers with large vehicles, trailers, try to negotiate a very small parking lot, or they park in the far end of the park, of the park to walk back to get the permit. The interview that I had with the employees was that this fee was very annoying to them and that, at the time that I asked, it had only raised $2,000 in total revenues for the city while also chasing away quite a significant number of tourists that would come to our city. I feel like it would be advantageous to us to remove or change this fee to an annual fee and ask that you inquire, are my numbers correct? Is the feeling that I have correct? And ask the city manager if he could present that information at the next meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Richard Deloach. Mr. Deloach, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Richard Deloach. I live at 608 Jefferson Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I'm a fleet mechanic for Fleet Maintenance Department, Portsmouth City. I'm here to ask the city council to follow through on this resolution passed last year to allow city workers to form a union or represent a union.
Sir, excuse me. Could you please move the mic closer to your mouth so everyone can hear? Yes, just speaking directly into the mic.
Okay. I'm here to ask the city council and the members to follow through on a resolution passed last year to allow Portsmouth city workers to be active in union representation and negotiate for collective bargaining without fear of retaliation or harassment, which I have become a part of. Since the resolution was passed last year, I engaged in having workers sign cards to join unions, and I became retaliated, part of retaliation from the manager of the Fleet Maintenance Department. On April 15th, myself and my coworkers, nine of 10 of my coworkers signed a petition of grievance against the manager because he was putting us in unsafe working conditions, and he, at the time, stated that any part of us representing the union was grounds for dismissal. At the meeting, he contacted the HR director, Mr. Coleman. Mr. Coleman informed him to shut the meeting down and not acknowledge receipt of the petition. Okay. On April 19th, Mr. Stollens came down. This was five days after the petition was delivered to Mr. Everett. Mr. Stollens came down and said any worker not happy with the conditions was more than able to write a letter of resignation. Now, since this is, since this came along, like I say, I've been suspended for three days without pay because I clocked out at 3:58 or 3:59 rather than at 4 o'clock. I was, I filed a grievance and appeal of the suspension with HR, and I've yet to hear anything from HR concerning that appeal and suspension. I filed a complaint with the EEOC about this. EEOC has yet to hear anything from HR about this subject. I have a letter from my doctor stating that I have Irritable Bowel Syndrome, and I cannot work around trash trucks or diesel fuel engines because it aggravates my condition. HR declined my reasonable accommodations letter based on the letter that they got from a doctor back in May. I got the letter from my doctor in August. Now, let's say, for three and a half years, I worked in shop two, which is regular diesel, I mean, regular gasoline-powered engines. Now, Mr. Everett is saying that he can't put me back in that department for whatever reason, and he put me right in the department where the trash trucks and the diesel fuel engines are working on, putting my health and my safety at risk. Like I said, I'm here to ask the city council to follow through on the resolution passed last year. Let the public and the city workers know that we can organize and negotiate for collective bargaining without fear of retaliation or harassment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Troya Wright. Mr. Troya Wright? Oh, is Troya male or female? I'm sorry. Mr. Wright, thank you.
Howdy, howdy. Troya Wright, 1319 Parker Avenue. I'm a male. Thank you. Yeah, I think we've all seen the city workers come and talk to city council multiple times. Firefighters have been here, the public sector workers have been here, the people that work for our city. I know it's not the workers' fault. I live at 1319 Parker Avenue, right? And you can look at the reports from Public Utilities. For three months straight, twice a day, they sent a pump truck out to my house to suck sewage out of my pipe when it was a problem that the sewer line under my street was messed up. For months, they sent people out there twice a day. These workers are like, I don't know why they don't send the camera out here. I don't know why they don't do X, Y, and Z. These people go out there with regular rubber gloves, no masks, no real PPE, dealing with raw sewage from my house. It's appalling. These workers are underpaid. These workers are understaffed. They have low safety conditions, and all they ask for is respect. What we just heard from Richard is not the only story, and you'll hear from more workers. But I'd love for everyone that came here to support Richard and city workers to stand up if you can. These folks came here to support Richard. He has been retaliated against. The Fleet Maintenance Department is understaffed. When he did that petition in April, they had 10 people on staff. The city is budgeted for 33 people. They work on over 1,400 vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances, trash trucks, et cetera, the pump trucks, everything, and we're resorting to renting vehicles for this city. At least make it possible for these workers to form a union. They are being retaliated in against day in and day out. Supervisors and managers asking them what they think about the union, giving them their opinions about the union, and we all know that's illegal, and it's also against city policy. The fact that HR is not taking care of Richard's grievance should make us all be alarmed. I just, I can't speak more to this point. I'm trying to really reel it in here, because I know we have rules of engagement, and Ms. White has really been taking, you know, a lot of, a lot of trouble with me today. So, I really appreciate all of you. Mr. Carter, I sent you an email personally on behalf of Mr. Deloach, so it'd be great if you can get back to us, and I think it's important that we all take care of this tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tiffany Stewart. Stewart, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Tiffany Stewart. I'm a paramedic in the fire department, and I'm the executive vice president of IFF Local 539 here in Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to show support and solidarity with my fellow city workers raising legitimate safety concerns. Fleet Maintenance services our fire trucks and our ambulances. Facilities Maintenance keeps our fire stations operating, and Public Utilities manages the water supplies that are essential for putting out structure fires. When these workers face unsafe conditions or lack the resources that they need, the consequences are felt in many other places, including public safety, and at the end of that stream is the city at large. Despite the passage of 23-373, adopting collective bargaining, no ordinance has been brought forward. Progress on that ordinance could have prevented what is happening tonight. City employees need a better process. Take the next steps and adopt an ordinance. Allow workers to meaningfully and collaboratively work with management to negotiate wages, terms, and conditions of employment. We're ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Kurt Dietrich. Mr. Dietrich, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Dietrich. I'm the president of the Portsmouth Firefighters and Paramedics Union, IFF Local 539. I'm here tonight in support of the workers in Fleet Maintenance, members of the UE Union. Over the past year, we've seen an increase in retaliation and hostility from department heads and city management against employees that are exercising their First Amendment right to freely associate and join unions. It was one year ago that the city council approved a resolution authorizing collective bargaining for city employees. However, we're still waiting on the ordinance to be finalized and approved, which will give the employees a formal, structured way to address issues like you'll hear about tonight. Speaking out on matters of public safety and other workplace concerns should not make anyone a target from management. The city, its employees, and the citizens deserve a fair, formal process for grievances to be heard and resolved, and the only proven way to do that is through collective bargaining. I urge you to support the workers, finalize the ordinance, and allow us to come to the table together for a better Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Alvin Long. Mr. Long, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Alvin Long. I live at 1738 LaSalle Avenue in Norfolk. I'm here tonight representing the Southern Workers of I'm here tonight representing the Southern Workers Assembly. Southern Workers Assembly organizes workers, rank-and-file workers in different industries, different unions, as well as unorganized workers all across the South with chapters now in around 20 cities, including our Hampton Roads chapter here, which has been working for years with city workers in all the different cities here, trying to help them get organized and to encourage community support for their organizing. I feel that Portsmouth, having already passed your resolution last year, is in a pretty unique position of being able to set an example for the rest of the Hampton Roads cities. You know, y'all have got the chance to, you know, step forward and show the rest of the state, really, that Portsmouth can take a lead in fairness and in recognizing their workers' basic fundamental rights to organize and to be able to speak and speak their minds and talk to their fellow workers even about what they're trying to do. It's really outrageous that it's possible even for department's management to be telling their workers that they don't have the legal right to organize, which is, you know, a constitutional right, a basic democratic right, anywhere where people have democracy. And I think that y'all need to really take a hard look at what's going on, especially in the Fleet Maintenance Department. You know, the fact that that kind of thing goes on shows exactly why you need a collective bargaining ordinance that gives workers the right and the power to be able to resolve these issues through a legitimate grievance procedure that's, you know, recognized in law and that applies to everybody equally. So, I hope that y'all will move forward with passing an ordinance recognizing collective bargaining. And I hope that you'll take some steps to make sure that what's been happening in the Fleet Maintenance Department, you know, ends right now. So, I appreciate your time and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jonathan Williams. Jonathan Williams, if you would come forward, sir. State your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Hello. My name is Jonathan Williams. I reside at 509 Roland Drive in the city of Norfolk, Virginia. I'm currently employed by the city of Portsmouth as a firefighter. And I've been a firefighter since 2011 here. In 2022, I completed the fire promotional process, testing at the rank of, testing for the rank of Fire Lieutenant. Upon completion, I finished at the rank of number five out of 54 candidates. The city uses a testing company to test and rank candidates through scientific measures, through doctors and folks with PhDs. That testing company is Morris and McDaniel. I have some questions regarding the process. Why is it? Why isn't the testing company's final outcome not used accordingly when it comes to promotions? Why is it that the only portion of the tests that is used is to interview with the fire chief? Why does the fire chief summarize responses that will be used to make selections for promotion? Why are those responses done using a pencil? Why does the police department, which uses the same process, promote candidates according to the outcome of Morris and McDaniel, where the fire department picks and chooses? How many points are awarded for the fire chief's interview? Why do certain candidates continue to get skipped over for promotion? And some candidates which meet the minimum qualifications get selected? How does someone jump over someone else in the interview that there is no score for? Why has there been a vote of no confidence placed on the fire chief in the past? Why aren't the interview questions for video recorded as the testing company video records responses for their questions that they ultimately decide for each candidate? What are the correct answers to the fire chief's interview? Why did the fire chief's interview questions change from subjective questions to objective questions during the same process since 2022? Why are scores from the fire chief's interview not listed or given to candidates? Why does the fire chief use a one-on-one interview where the testing company chooses a panel interview? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Elliot Cohen. Mr. Cohen, if you would come forward, state your name and address, sir. You will have five minutes.
Elliot Cohen resided at 3613 Point Elizabeth Drive in Chesapeake. I own property City Line Plaza in Portsmouth. 2016, I tried to bring to the attention of the city about a ditch, and finally, we got it taken care of. Thanks to Mark Hugel, thanks to Mr. Carter, thanks to Mr. Glover, and also Dr. Dotson came out to sight and looked at it. And last week, it was pretty much completed. So, moral of the story is stay with it. I also, coincidentally, had to go downtown to turn one of the water meters on for the shopping center. And to my surprise, I was there for two minutes and it was taken care of. I don't know who's running the department now, but it used to take an hour or two. So, my hat goes off to the Water Department. I ran into a parking question. I have a new tenant coming in, sells cars. I was informed by the tenant that the property wasn't zoned for a car lot. They require 10 parking spaces. They require 10 spaces, not parking spaces. And I was told right away, no. Started questioning, got some legal information, went back to Mr. Boone and also the head of the department there, Ms. Russell. And a couple of days later, they said that it would be okay. So, I'm here just to say thank you to the city and everybody that helps me run my small business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Tillis, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, a lot of different concerns were brought up tonight. And so, I wanted to see, number one, about when we could get our, the timeline for the draft ordinance for the collective bargaining. But also, there were some situations that were brought up in regards to, that dated back to April. I think the guy gave the date of April 15th of 2024, which was prior to Mr. Carter's arrival. But if that situation could be looked into, I think it would be beneficial for the city, but also for the city employees.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hugel, the draft ordinance has been provided to council already. You all have had it for some time. Whenever you all are ready to move forward, with the decisions to move forward, we will make those changes. Also, Mr. Carter, who is new to the process, was given the same draft to provide some financial information and other things that only he would be privy to. And so, at the directive of this council, those things can be provided and moved forward. We await your determination.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any other questions or concerns for the good of the order? Seeing none, we wish each and every one of you a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday. This meeting is adjourned.